Yeah, what's going on over at the hospital?
Oh, what? Is there something? I don't know.
I saw something posted. Things are not going well or something. I believe it was health. Or a setback or something. I didn't understand. Want to call to order the August 20th regular city council meeting. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge. Okay, what in 1.0, public comments and announcements. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments, all comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business, or matters of general public interest, and should not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Deborah DeLucia.
My name is Deborah DeLucia. I live at 929 Mystic Village in Seabrook, Texas. And I hate speaking in public, and I usually always end up being the first person up here. So sorry if I'm a little jittery. Last week, I think it was, we were up here talking about the warehouses, the, and I wasn't, well, there was a lot of talk about the traffic, which is a reasonable problem. But there wasn't so much talked about the danger to the community of anhydrous ammonia refrigeration warehouses. After I went home, I did a little bit of research and it just, you know, like most people do, put something into Google like anhydrous ammonia warehouses, and immediately you are bombarded with all these leaks, fires, explosions, problems with anhydrous ammonia refrigeration problems. Yes, there are safe, you know, some, a lot safely run, just like any of our plants. I worked in plants. I've worked around ammonia. And, you know, we have a lot of industry around us. But this warehouse is within, is so close to our community, our neighborhoods. And if you just look at one of the accidents in Alabama, a huge release of ammonia from one of these facilities went only a quarter of a mile and sent 135 people to the hospital, four seriously, with, you know, lasting problems from this. These leaks are, can happen often, and there are OSHA requirements and standards and EPA standards that go along with running these facilities. And I'm just wondering, do we know who the operator of this facility is going to be and what their safety record has been in other places? Because a lot of them don't have that great a record. And also, we need to be asking from these companies what their standard, what they, let me look here. I have a few notes. Okay. Are they complying with OSHA and EPA? And do they have an emergency response plan, which they are required to have by the EPA, that has been also communicated with the fire department and first responders of our city, who will probably be the first ones to be put in that position if something was to happen? They need to be aware of this too. And they need to have that kind of communication with whoever is going to be running this place. We also need to be able to look at their process hazard analysis or review these things that they have to submit. And we need to know, does this system employ hot gas defrost? How is their ammonia stored? How is their contaminated water disposed of? There's a lot of processes that can be very harmful to our environment, to our community. And the other thing I found out that most accidents and leaks happen during maintenance and commissioning. The maintenance required on these, there's a, this is a very corrosive material, the, you know, anhydrous ammonia. There is constant maintenance. And who is going to be the person from our city that inspects these people? Or to make sure that they are compliant to these OSHA regulations?
Drinking coffee every day didn't work for me, but I couldn't figure out why.
So anyway, those are just a few of the things. And, you know, like I said, y'all all probably have done, maybe you've done your own research on these facilities. But at this time, and without knowing a whole lot more about it, I think it's very dangerous to be right within our city limits, right within the distance that it could cause such harm to our community with any kind of leaks. And that's all I'm gonna.
Thank you. And 1.1, mayor, city council, and our members of the city staff may make announcements and our city community events. Buddy?
Okay. On Saturday, September the 14th, from 8:00 to 10:00, we have Kids Fish at Bayside Park. Then, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and that's the 13th, 14th, and 15th, we have the DF95. And for those that don't know what DF95 is, it's the Remote Sailing State Championship. It too will be at Bayside Park. Friday, starting at 9:00, going till 6:00 PM. Saturday, from 10:30 to 6:00 PM. Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Then, also on the 14th, Saturday, we have Concerts for Kids, which goes from 5:00 to 10:00 at Barge 295. And then on Saturday, the 28th of September, we have the Saltwater Derby, Seabrook Saltwater Derby. That too will be at Barge 295.
Anybody else have any announcements? 2.0 presentations. 2.1, presentation of an update regarding the progress of the Trap Neuter Return Pilot Program. Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the four-month progress report on the TNR program that you approved on April 1st, or to go into effect April 1st. To date, the group has, the group of volunteers has cataloged 38 cats. They've spayed and neutered 11, which works toward their goal, spaying and neutering those animals on the point. They've rehomed a number of those animals, nine to be exact. We haven't euthanized any cats from the point in that period, and we haven't had any nuisance cat calls since the program has been implemented. So I think those are all successes. I know at the last update, I advised you all that we still owed them trash receptacle out there. That's been installed. We've also ordered a couple of additional signs to help them recruit volunteers, because that's one of the things they said they needed. But unless you have any questions, that's the end of the update.
Anybody? Anybody? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
2.2, presentation of a lifesaving award to Officer Jordan Tankersley for the lifesaving efforts he provided for a severely injured child on July 5th, 2024.
Yes, Chief. Officer Tankersley, if you'd come up, please. At this time, I would like to present the lifesaving award to Seabrook Police Officer Jordan Tankersley for his quick thinking and actions that he took just a few short weeks ago. On Monday, July 5th, Officer Tankersley responded to the report of a severely injured child who was injured in a boating accident. When he arrived, he found a child laying in the back of a boat. His quick thinking and reactions helped the child, because he applied a tourniquet to the child's one of his legs, which were severely damaged by props of a boat. I'm sure his efforts led to the child making a full recovery or will make a full recovery. Officer Tankersley also assisted EMS with getting him to the ambulance where they could take him to a landing zone. I believe the child was transported to the hospital by Lifeline. So if you would all join me in congratulating Officer Tankersley.
2.3, a presentation and quarterly update of the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. Chief?
Hello, Nathan Douglas, Chief of the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. I want to thank Gail Cook for inviting me to do this quarterly. I think it's important that the city leadership knows about the fire department that serves this city. So I, I also appreciate your time, because I know time is precious. I'll try to be brief, but I'm not very good at that at times. First and foremost, I would like to talk about our statistics year to date. This is through August 1st. We've run a total of 788 emergencies. One of the most important things, I think that is really important to the city as well, is our full support of the City of Seabrook EMS Division. And I've been keeping track of 2024, how many times we've helped them in a serious incident. And what I mean by that is 16 times we've accounted for being in the back of the ambulance, and 12 times we've driven the ambulance. So why is that important? That's important because if something happens, God forbid, to you or a family member, we can put both paramedics in the back, who are advanced life support certified medics. Us as EMTs can drive the ambulance, and you get the best care out there versus having one medic in the back. So I think those stats are very important, and we'll talk a little bit more about the first responder program as I talk. So any questions about stats? I would like to point out this too. We ran an incredible amount of calls during July, 168 calls for service. I would like to compare that to when I joined in 1987, and we ran less than 100 a year. I do run some calls, but I do not do the, carry the load. The people who carry the load are the firemen back there and the members. And I do want to point out, I appreciate them coming today. I wasn't even here for BURL, but what these volunteers did during BURL is really, it's unprecedented. We're very blessed and fortunate to have them. If, I would like to introduce them to you real quick. There's Lieutenant Jimmy Hart. He's an EMT firefighter. There's Assistant Chief Aaron Risto. He is our training officer in a firefighter medic. There's Captain Lindsay Price. She is a certified firefighter, EMT, and completing paramedic school. And there's our newest medic, who is Emergency Medical Response Technician, Casey Williamson. She's been in the fire department a long time. That's just a snapshot of some of the people we have. We carry a roster of 60 people. So I'm very appreciative to them, because frankly, I can't believe that we can maintain the calls for service we are. And if it wasn't for them rotating through these calls and taking turns at night, we'd have to talk about a serious change of plans. So I'm very appreciative of them. I would like to talk about how we respond. Last time, we talked about pictures and the apparatus we own, so we all understand the types of apparatus. As you know, we have two fire stations. We do not respond as our traditional, this station goes, this one doesn't, this one goes, this one doesn't. We don't do that. I would like you to think of it more as a satellite or an extension. What I mean by that is when the police department dispatchers call us, we really respond as one organization. We just happen to have two places to house trucks. That is not the same in other cities, but that's how we operate, just because of the size. So I just wanted to point that out to y'all. And I made some notes to myself. I want to talk a little bit about the way we respond, in case anybody ever asks you, or you have questions, or see something, and you, as an a city official, can have a, a good answer for them. Embedded in fire terminology is a lot of history. Firemen will go to their grave with tradition and history, sometimes generationally. And so I'm going to give you two terminologies that have some history too in my presentation here, so you can understand how serious it is to the hearts of some of these folks. When we have a structure fire in the city, and it could be simply, my house is on fire and hang up, that activates a process. And it starts with a 911 call, and it starts with those dispatchers. Behind the scenes, the computers are sending to our mutual aid partners automatic calls for service to come help us. So I want you to be aware, why are there so many fire trucks coming to this call? So we call that a box alarm assignment, and I'm going to get to the history of what a box alarm means, because I, that's, I think, cool history. And it's based on an NFPA, National Fire Protection Association standard. It's standard 1720. And that is a best practice standard. It is not law across this entire nation of how fire departments should respond to emergencies. So if you were to say that, what happens is, we're dispatched. Our partners are dispatched simultaneously. KEMA, Nassau Bay, Webster, and Port Houston. They're all coming immediately. And that's done on purpose, because the standard requires four firefighters on scene within four minutes. And then within eight minutes, the standard requires 15 to 17 firefighters to a low hazard response. So believe it or not, that's the lowest standard, a house fire, and it only builds from there. So some people might ask, why is Webster here? Why is KEMA here? Why is that happening? It's planned, and it happens that way all across the country. Other departments that are bigger can do that in-house. Smaller departments rely on each other to make that happen. So although I said we have 60 people, we're lucky to get six, eight, 10 out the door to meet those requirements. So we have the built-in safeguards, and the reverse is true. When KEMA has a house fire or a structure fire or something like that, it's automatically dispatched, and we're going over the bridge. The thought behind this is, they send a truck, they send a truck, but you don't vacate your city. So there's always resources left to respond to their cities and such. So I, I would like you to understand that, in case you ever get questioned like that, because it's very normal, best practices for that to occur. The term box alarm assignment, I told you they're embedded in tradition. Some of us are generationally challenged, like myself, and might actually remember what I'm going to talk about. Boston, Chicago, New York, Baltimore, Philadelphia, and even Houston, back in the days before 911, they had an alarm box at the corner of a street. You've probably seen pictures. You've heard of it. You pull the box, the alarm, it's the exact same thing that you have in hotels today. Well, before phones, those were direct lines to fire stations. Those boxes had numbers. So let's use the number 1700. I pulled the box at 1700. It rings the dispatch center before telephones, box 1700. That is embedded history for 150 years that is still used today in the fire service. And the, so I just like that piece of the history of that, and that's where that term comes from. Okay, before I move on, I would like to say, I told you that's a low hazard response is 15 to 17 firefighters. A medium hazard response is 28 firefighters. That, and by NFPA definition, a medium hazard response is a house with a basement. So we don't really have that, but how does that apply here? Start looking at maybe some of the apartment complexes. And then they have a high hazard response, which is 43 firefighters. That's going to be your high-rise response. The Hilton, and I could almost argue some of our hotels, 3,300 towers out of three, four stories tall now. We don't have that built in automatically. We still get the low hazard response initially. And then if we get there and it warrants that, then that's where you hear the terms on the news, second alarm, third alarm. We have that built out through dispatch. We say it, more people are coming. Now you're reaching out to Lake City, LaPorte, Friendswood, things of this nature. So any questions about that before I move on?
Questions?
One more piece of history. So all these fire trucks are coming. Lindsay gets there first and says, oh, it's a one-truck response. I don't need all them. She gets on the radio and uses terminology called tapout. Tapout history is very interesting. In New York, they used to have water pipes that were wooden above ground. So when you needed water for your steam engines, you drilled a hole in the water pipe, connected your hose to that, to the steam engines and the horse-drawn carriages, and then when the fire was over, they tapped it out. They put a wooden dowel in there and tapped it out. That terminology still exists in the fire service today. So it's just things like that. So you get a professional response. All these apparatus are coming, but if it doesn't warrant that, we turn them around. That's best practices. It happens. It happens everywhere in this country, especially in the big cities. The next thing I'd like to talk about is we are a very unique fire department, that we are kind of blended. And what I mean by that is we're the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department, but you could also consider us kind of like the medical corps. And you go to the East Coast and some of these other places, they have ambulance corps that don't do fire. So we're very fortunate that our membership, although it's one membership category, they kind of break out to three divisions. We have firefighters such as myself and Lindsay and such that are firefighters and medics. We do it all. We have people who like, oh, I don't really like firefighting. I'll help you, but I'm medically driven. I want to do medical stuff. And then we have medics only and firefighters only. So it kind of breaks up that, but we have a lot of people in this department to almost a total of 20-plus people that are certified medics. So that is a great asset to the city. It's a great asset to EMS and, you know, we live together and house together and we're working great together. It's really awesome. So I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to say that you, as the commoners out in the world, know first responders as medics, firemen, policemen, city works people who help keep the sewer plants going, military people, those are first responders as general terminology. In the fire service, we break it down further. They call it medical first responding, which means fire departments that also respond to medical calls. That is best practices in this country as well for career and volunteer fire departments. There are some that do exist that don't respond to medical calls, but I want to point that out, that we do that and we do it for the sake of all of us. Helps the medics, they help us, all of that. And it can be as simply as we talked about, somebody in the bow of a boat. That's very difficult for two people to get them out of the boat. It can be very simple, all the way up to some of the life-saving efforts that we've had with the police department that just recognized the officer. So it's very important that you know that we have a first responder program here. That response looks a little different. The box alarm assignment in the fire response, with the exception of a few, except for the chiefs and officers, the members go to the fire station, get the fire trucks and respond. Our medical blended program is a little different. We have three Tahos that the chiefs drive and we have two pickups assigned to the stations. People who meet the certifications and the requirements are allowed to check out our pickup trucks. And like when I go out of town, I give the Tahoe to a responding member who's like, oh, I'm going to commit to this weekend and I'll run all weekend. So the theory behind it is they're out in the field. They're shopping at Kroger, they're at home, they're mowing their grass, they're running their errands, they're out in the field, they're dispersed. When these calls come in, heart attacks, kids who get run over by boats, all sorts of things. We have people there fast. And that's the purpose of those support vehicles. So it's a blended format. You have to turn their minds when the fire call goes, you gotta go to the fire station. But that's why you see some of these fire apparatus running around the city, very similar to police cars, the Tahos and pickup trucks. So I wanted to make sure you all understood why they exist and what they're here for. And that's all I have. Entertain any questions? So I hope that helped and educated you a little bit.
Any questions?
I did have, I had a question. So if you have a fire at the plant, what do we, what does Seabrook, how are they involved?
I can answer that question. We don't have any plants inside the city limits of Seabrook, first of all. However, when I joined in 1987 as a 16-year-old kid, I was introduced to something called the Channel Industrial Mutual Aid. That's called SEMA. There's actually a law that allows that organization to form. The law came about in the 50s. The theory behind the law was industry wanted to take care of industry and relieve the burden on municipalities. So that number is just under 200. It's about 180 chemical plants and gas and oil plants belong to that organization. They have full-time people in that organization. So what that means is all these plants help each other. So when there's a significant size incident, they have a dispatch center, they're dispatching first alarm assignments with lots of industrial trucks. We joined it prior to my membership in the early 80s, maybe even the 70s, for the sole purpose of them to come help us. Not so much that we could help them. And back in those days, it was the pipeline corridor, the rail was still active, and then if an 18-wheeler overturned in, on the highway. So we still belong to that today. So we have that resource. I need this and it's coming. It's a slower response, but it comes. History has proven, they need us more than we need them. Since 1987, knock on wood, we've never called into the city. They've called us a lot. We've gone to almost all the major chemical plant incidences, including ITC and some of the shipfires. Because back in the day, they did not do interior firefighting very well. They needed interior firefighters. So we've helped them a lot. They would be here with a plethora of experts. They have a whole expertise command staff. So they would come here and help us respond. In addition to that, hazmat teams here have grown exponentially since I started. There used to be one, like it used to be Houston. Now they're everywhere. Baytown has a federally funded hazmat team. We have called and had them in the city. Remember, remember the white powder incidences in the mail? What was that? I can't remember what it's called. What?
Anthrax.
Anthrax. We had Baytown come here because everybody's got a mail with salt in it, thought it was anthrax. So they have testing capabilities. SEMA has lots of hazmat teams that can help us as well. Harris County funds a tremendous-sized one now and they're like the go-to regionally. And then of course Houston. All of them will come and all of them will come at our request as long as they're not busy. So as a first responder organization, we're going to go there and isolate, evacuate, deny entry, try to figure out what we got, let the experts come in and go from there. So that would be our response. And it's always been that way. To be honest, from hazardous materials capability, we're very basic in novice. We have the knowledge. Some of our people work in chemical plants and have a vast amount of knowledge, but we're not a hazmat team. Even if you had a career department here, they wouldn't be a hazmat team. So just to give an example, natural gas leaks. We have very basic stuff that we can plug it and stop it. Two out of three times, we just isolate, wait, and the center point comes and they have much more detailed equipment, they have all the skills. So it's very similar to that, but just on a bigger scale. Does that answer your question?
Sir. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Nathan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the August 6, 2024 joint meeting and the August 6, 2024 regular city council meeting. 3.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the Economic Development Corporation Administrative Services Agreement between the City of Seabrook and the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation for the fiscal year 2024-25. 3.3, approve the quarterly investment report for the period of April 24 through June 2024.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Agreed.
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. 4.0, specific public hearing. 4.1, conduct the public hearing on a request for the zoning classification of a land described below from the current classification of R1 single-family detached residential district to R2 single-family detached residential district small lots. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, you have a request, a rezone, attract a property from R1 single-family to R2 single-family. I'd like to just provide a quick summary of the action that was taken from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 20, 2024 regular meeting recommended approval of the request for the rezoning change from R1 single-family residential district to R2 single-family residential small lot district. This is the property that we're discussing tonight. It's 16.474, I mean 479 acres. It's located just west of Toddville Road. It's located south of North Heron and north of Mystic Village Lane. And its current zoning is R1, sorry. This is just a survey of the property. It is two contiguous tracks. What I would like to do at this point is just kind of give you guys a description of the two zoning districts and what the differences are between the two districts. So an R1 single-family detached residential district, the description within our zoning code currently is this district is primarily intended for single-family detached residential dwellings and related religious, educational, and recreational facilities normally required to provide the basic elements of a balanced and attractive neighborhood. The major differences between these districts is very minor. All the setbacks are the same, except one exception that was granted to an R1 zoning district that if you have the side yards, there's a reduction for the side yard requirement if your property was platted prior to July 19th of 1970. And it allows a five-foot side setback in lieu of the total needing to be a sum of 15 feet. So typically you'll have a seven and a half and a seven and a half foot side setback unless it was platted prior to 1970 and then you're allowed to have a reduction in that to five feet. That was considered and approved back in the day when there was some issues. All the properties that are up and down Toddville Road were all platted as 6,250 square-foot plaques or properties, parcels, sorry, parcels. And they were having some problems fitting houses of appropriate size on those lots. So this was something that council. The other major difference between the two zoning districts is in square footage of the lot size. And within an R1 zoning district, you're required to have a 7,500 square-foot lot. When you go through the rest of the text that I haven't highlighted in this area, it's all the same. It's identical to R1 and R2 is exactly the same. So I'm going to read you the quick, the description of an R2 residential district. This district is primarily intended for detached, single-family residential dwellings of a higher density than is permitted in R1 and includes zero lot line. This zone also allows for related religious, educational, and recreational facilities normally required to provide the basic elements of a balanced and attractive neighborhood. Again, the only difference between these two zoning districts, for the most part, I'm going to elaborate on additional use that's permitted, but the major difference is you're allowed to build a six-foot or plat, a 6,000-square-foot lot in lieu of a 7,500-square-foot lot. So the basis of this, for the most part, the difference between, for every four lots that you're allowed to build in an R1 zone, if you do the reduction, you gain one lot for every four lots. The math makes sense. There's a 1,500-square-foot difference, so every four lots, you gain one 6,000-square-foot lot. That's the difference in what you would be approving tonight. One of the other differences is within this district, it mentioned you're allowed to have zero lot line housing. It doesn't change the density, this use. If you have zero lot line housing, you're still required to have 6,000-square-foot lot. It just changes how the structure is actually positioned on the property itself. You're just sliding it over where it's on the zero lot line side, but you're still required to have that setback where you're maintaining your minimum fire separations as required per the code. So really, you're just moving the structure around on the property and the look of the subdivision looks different. However, the actual size of the lots are the same. We do have one subdivision that has built a zero lot line subdivision within our community. It's on Repstorf and it's gated over there and it's Pelican, it's not Pelican's Nest, but it's across the street from Pelican's Nest. I'm sorry, don't. And again, all the rest, this just goes into details. There are some additional elements within the zero lot line requirements where they're required to have specific types of fencing, they got it between the properties, those type of elements. And then it talks about parking. So that concludes my presentation on the differences between the two. The applicant is here. He's available to answer any questions you guys may have. And I welcome any questions you may have also.
Anybody have any questions?
I got one. A few years ago, three or maybe three or four years ago, someone came and wanted to do something on that exact same piece of property. They wanted to build like 80 homes or, and is this about the same amount of homes?
No, it's not. They actually, they came in and they actually wanted, they presented a planning unit development or a PUD document to y'all. It was presented to Planning, Zoning, and to City Council. And they wanted to, they were trying to build a subdivision that had just under 100 homes on it. And they wanted to reduce lot sizes beyond the standards that we have in our code. They were trying to do 35 and 40-foot wide lots, much like Old Seabrook Village that was approved. This body at the time, the council that was sitting at the time, didn't believe that it was appropriate to put that much density on that property. What these individuals are asking for is just to go to a different existing zoning district that we have. Really, the net difference between the two districts is you'll, it's between them being able to build between 18 and 15 additional homes, depending on how the subdivision's laid out.
I have a question. Mike?
So where do we have R2 now? I know you said Repstorf, is that?
We have R2 sporadically throughout our community. There's R2 over off of Repstorf. All the property that's south of Red Bluff, over by the Public Works Facility, it's portion of it's Blisari Track and then the Swerogen Track. I'm sorry, I don't have maps to show you guys. But in that area, that whole area, which is probably equates to about 75 acres, is all R2.
So there's some.
So it's a normal zoning district throughout the community. Again, it just allows for some additional.
So another question is, and again, I'm not sure why he wouldn't go and ask for a PUD because then we would have a little bit more control on kind of what he's building. I guess that's my concern because this is just changing the zoning and so he could go and do whatever he wanted, consider to R2 whatever's required.
That's correct. I mean, basically, it's still filled, basically, it's going to be single-family detached residential, just like any other subdivision. It's just really the changes in lot size. So right now, they could go build on that property and probably build about 60 houses in lieu of the 70 that they've shown on.
He's wanting.
A diagram or maybe 55 in lieu of the 70 and build exactly the same thing they can build in C2. And they're limited to the same things that you're limited in R2. I said C2, but R2.
Right. Do we know what size the homes will be on there or in the value of these homes by any chance?
I can let the.
You know what I mean? How much you're going to be asking for these homes in kind of the square footage?
So even though we're changing to R2, our preliminary design is for 6,500 square-foot lot, so 6,000 will look smaller. And the value we proposed around $400,000-ish.
For each home?
$400,000-ish for each home. Yes, sir. And those homes are going to be braked, you know, nice-looking community.
Buddy?
Okay, just to understand that the lot sizes will be 6,500 square feet, correct?
Yes, sir. That's our preliminary design. Even though we changed to R2, R2 is 6,000, but in our preliminary design, we're doing 6,500 square-foot lot.
I would just like to point out that if you go to HCAD and you look at the internal homes in the Baybrook subdivision, the lots there are 60 by 110, which the lots in Baybrook are 6,600. So what he suggests or what he's proposing, there'll be, the lot size will be 100 square feet less that's in Baybrook. So that gives you a physical, you know, something to look at. That also, on the lot sizes for where Mr. McCall is going to be looking at on Brightlight, there are a number of homes in there that are equal to 6,500 or less, something like that. But again, that's what I've picked up off of HCAD.
Jackie?
First, I'd like to echo kind of what Mike said. Why aren't we doing this through a PUD? Why are we doing this just through rezoning? I mean, it seems like if this falls through, we don't really have any, we're kind of open to the next thing. I mean, isn't it normal to do a PUD for something like this, a big project?
We're doing this for a few reasons. Number one, this lot sitting there for acres, no one, despite the potential to develop, but a lot of developers got turned away. Because one-third of the space or detention pound, we want to build a park out of it. You know, we want to build community amendments, you know. And with that being said, only two-thirds of the lot, as you can see in our preliminary design, can build houses. And the cost of construction and development are increased 20% compared with last year, last couple of years. And it becomes very challenging for developers to take a project under R1. And with, with build R2, we can build maybe 25, 30 houses more, but we're not building tiny homes, we're not building 6,000 square foot, even we're, you know, we're R2. But we still want to. You know, but we still want to um bring housing to City of Seabrook.
Right.
Yep.
Um, what, thank you. Uh, what are the approximate square foot um houses on for these size lots?
Uh, roughly around fifteen hundred to two thousand. That's our um, that's our.
Okay.
Thing for, yeah, we don't have the drawings yet. Uh, but for that size of a lot, we're, you know, shooting for at least three bedroom, two baths and for fifteen to two thousand square foot around.
Okay. And and are we, you out of the, what's the base flood elevation? Are we, are these going to be having to be on stilts or?
Yeah, uh, it's going to be stills, a mix of stills and on slap.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to envision it all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Nope. Um, one of the, one of the other things I want to bring everybody's attention to is the state legislature at this point is considering, you know, they considered it last session. They're considering a high-density, small lot home that's, that uh we can't control. In other words, they can build uh on uh sixty by forty foot lots in this area. And so that will pass legislation this year, I've been promised. And it's, in, in my opinion, that's the worst thing that can happen to us. They've already tried it once and they're going to try it again. And this is a prime piece of property for that to happen on. So I would like to uh try and uh avoid that at all possibilities. Okay, this is a specific public hearing, so I invite anybody to come up to speak for or against this project. Come up to the microphone, state your name and address and give us your comments or concerns. Anybody around? Okay. In that case, we'll close the public hearing. Four point two, conduct the public hearing and our request of for approval of the final planned unit development PUD to create fifty-eight fifteen old Highway one forty-six, the Monroe Quiet Warehousing Project, comprising of two twenty-three thousand nine hundred eighty square foot tilt-wall constructed warehouses located on a three point six nine five acre tract of land. Sean?
Again, I'd like to give a summary of the action that's previously been taken on this project by planning and zoning and city council. So again, you guys are aware, this is a two-step process. You got to get a preliminary plan unit development approved first and then you come back with a final PUD document. So they're here tonight to request approval of their final plan unit development document. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting recommended approval of the request for approval of the preliminary PUD for the, for the fifty-eight fifteen old one forty-six Monroe Quiet Warehousing Project. The city council at their February twentieth, twenty-four regular meeting also approved this project for preliminary consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their June twentieth, twenty-four regular meeting uh reviewed and also recommended approval of their request for the final PUD. Uh, I always like to state this at the beginning because the, the process for a planning unit development is unique. Uh, so the purpose of the planning unit development PUD is to provide a flexible approach for development, allows a more flexible response to the market, encourages innovative mixed uses in site plan design. So again, it's a process that gives the city the ability to look at the zoning on a proposed piece of property specific to the property itself and if the use is appropriate at that location. And it also allows you guys to put conditions on, on how it's going to be developed. So I always describe this, it's a master plan. Uh, the property is currently a zone commercial, uh, medium, C two. And the C two medium commercial district is designed or to facilitate centers which accommodate trade and personal services. These businesses are free beyond their property lines of pollution caused by noise, offensive odors and the emissions of airborne particles. Heavy arterial street traffic is characteristic of this district. Uh, the regulation provisions of this district are aimed at achieving the specific goals and objectives identified in the comprehensive master plan twenty twenty. So currently the property is zone medium commercial. However, uh, for warehousing, it's required to be in a light industrial zoning district. So that's the, the reason for the request. This is the property in question. It's currently, the property is actually located east of Old One Forty-Six and just north of Red Bluff Road. Uh, again, this is just an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's adjacent to an existing approved plan unit development, uh, the RV Park. And these two properties uh are owned by the same individual. So the individual who owns the RV Park is making the request to changes to allow the warehousing at this location. In previous meetings, they voiced uh their opinion that they would like to create a buffer and they want to guarantee what's built to the RV Park. And they're comfortable that if this project was approved, it'd create that buffer between the two uses that they would like to see before anything else is developed further to the north. This is an exhibit cut right out of our twenty tw- uh forty comprehensive master plan. And it's uh the, the exhibit that represents our office warehouse district. And this property does fall within uh the limits of the office warehouse district. Uh, it's actually located where my cursor is, right at the edge of the district. So it, this, the request is compliant with our comprehensive master plan. It, it's supported by that document. And so what, so what I'd like to do at this point, since this is the final PUD document, I want to go through the actual document with you so you can see what's in it. I know I sent this to you guys previously. It's been a while ago because, because of Hurricane Barrel, we uh had to move this item to a future meeting. So it's been a while, but I know I sent this to you guys for your review prior to the meeting. Uh, so I'm just going to run through this quickly. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you because I had to send it to you, but I do want to kind of run through it. So basically, the, the proposed land use within the document, it states this PUD development of two tilt-wall port warehouses, each containing twenty-four thousand square foot of floor space, excuse me, office space, reception area, break rooms, warehousing, port-related materials and products distributed through the U.S. private concrete drives, landscaping, lighting, signage, parking, security, fencing, open space, requirements, detention slash pond and utilities. So they're just describing the project. Uh, the maximum height of the building, they're showing that the maximum height won't exceed forty feet. Within our residential zoning di- districts, that's still the limits within those districts. So they're not asking for any allowance that's beyond what's uh normally allowed or permissible within those zoning districts. And then they create one exception, which is in our code now. They just basically copied this out of our zoning code where there's a, there's an exception to allow uh steeples and spires, belfries, copules, apparent uh appurtenances usually required to be placed above the roof. Uh, the existing area, they're describing the area of the property. It's three point six nine five acres totaling a hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty-four square feet. And then there's a, a requirement within our PUD ordinance that requires that at least twenty percent of the property still has to be maintained as open space. So they're just describing that they're complying with the open space requirements and providing the numbers to support that. And then within our ordinance, it's kind of interesting this is in there, but it is in there. There's something you got to describe where you're going to put your trash receptacles. And they're just describing that element where it's going to be placed and how it's not going to be visible from Red Bluff Road. They do describe in here that they are going to be putting a, a six-foot-high galvanized chain link fence around the property, which is typical for a warehouse project and it'll have three rails of barbed wire. Uh, they're not asking for any variances from our current parking ordinance. So they're showing that they're going to be compliant with Article Five of our parking ordinance within our current zoning ordinance. Oops. And also they're stating that all parking lots, vehicle use areas shall meet the City of Seabrook ordinances as it relates to, it's required to be a solid service and they're identifying it's going to be concrete. Again, this section's taught, just uh dealing with the building setbacks, a minimal front yard setback of not thirty-five feet. That's standard within all our districts, our commercial districts, and then side yard fifteen and minimal rear yard of fifteen. They're uh referencing exhibits in here and I'll just, I'm not going, I'll run through the exhibits when we get finished. Uh, not more than fifty percent of, they're putting this stipulation on them that not more than fifty percent of the total side area shall be covered by building mass. So that's within the document. And then again, landscaping shall be in accordance with Article Five and Seven of the city code. They're not writing their own landscaping requirements. It, there's maybe some slight deviations on the site plan, but for the most part, they're going to comply with our sections of the code. And that's what they're stipulating. And then they're also putting on here, even though this project's not adjacent to any residential other than the RV Park, which is technically a commercial project, they're putting, uh, they put stipulations or regulations in here limiting how the lighting will project from the property boundaries. The, I think this was important. We went through this process since this PUD and it's a warehouse, it's not specific to a specific use like the freezer complex that we're talking about. This, we wanted to make sure that they weren't, they didn't have the ability to put hazardous materials in these warehouses. That's not how our L I zoning district's written. So they went through and they put in here the specifics. They copied this out of Article Two of our zoning code where it prohibits certain uses within the city. So again, they can't store organic or organic compounds. Uh, we have a prohibition that you can't have rail tracks lined spurs or storage yards within our uh city limits. And also there's a, a, a limitation in our code that you can't use shipping containers for anything other than if it's on a truck chassis and it's, at that point in time, it's treated as a trailer or a semi-trailer. It's not treated as a shipping container. So that's in there. So there's limitations for that. There's a, a section that talks about their industrial limits that they, you know, they can't emit uh air contaminants. And then a- again, it's talks about no commercial or industrial use should be located or operated, which emits odorous matter. So again, they're, this is stuff that's copied straight out of our code that, that prohibits these type of uses in a L I zoning district to begin with. So they're not trying to write anything in. And I made sure they identified within the PUD document that they weren't going to do something that we prohibit everywhere in the city, no matter what, even in our most intensive zoning districts. As far as color palette, it shall be uniform for both warehouses. Primary exterior finishes shall be con- concrete tilt-wall construction. So this warehouse will be tilt-wall. It's going to be a concrete tilt-wall building. And they're also showing that it's going to have a storefront. So even though there's not retail development within this, when you look at it, these buildings from the front, and I'll show you the illustrations or exhibits that go with this, it's going to have a glass storefront on both buildings. And then they're, they're uh prescribing that it's going to be a flat roof. And then again, this, they're asking for two uh just under twenty-four thousand square foot warehouses. Uh, it's limited, within the document, it limits them to those two buildings. Buffering screening, uh, this goes through the process of just uh dictating how they have to buffer from adjacent properties. A lot of this has to do a lot with if it's adjacent to residential properties where it's not. So again, I'm just going to kind of skip over this, but it's in there. And then it taught, the buffering and screening again, a continuation. This stuff was drafted straight out of our ordinances and that's why it's referencing some sections. But it's also dictating how the front yard landscape has to be put in place. I'm not going to, this got duplicated within the document, so I'm not going to read it to you again. And so that concludes that portion of the presentation. I want to run through these exhibits with you guys real quick, if you would like, please. So within the document itself, these are the exhibits that they're referencing. Uh, D one is a location or site map. This shows where the detention pond's going to be located. It shows the two twenty-four thousand square foot buildings. It shows their parking, their aisles for getting trucks in and out and their fire lanes. So it's a layout of the property. Ultimately, it shows the T, the uh T head at the end where you can turn around the vehicles if there's a fire. Uh, this is an aerial of that, so it just shows it with what's adjacent to it. It also shows some landscaping. Uh, again, they've duplicated some of the site plan information, but it's just another copy of that. This is actually a parking plan, but within the parking plan, they're also showing how the offices are going to be laid out within the building. So again, the, there'll be office space and then there'll be the warehousing itself. Open space landscaping plan, there's a typo here, I'll get that fixed. This is the, showing the dumpster locations and where their sign is going to be located. They're not asking for any deviation or any modification to our sign ordinance. So it's a monument and it'll meet our current standards. Within our PUD document, it's required for them to submit where they're proposing to put their utilities. So this is a utility plan and it shows where their water and sewer is going to connect. And also ultimately it shows how their detention's going to be addressed. Uh, this project's unique because uh old State Highway one forty-six at this location's either going to be a county right-of-way or a state right-of-way. So when they start dealing with their detention requirements, they'll have to permit this driveway and all their detention and their drainage with the county or the state. These are the illustrations of the building elevations. Uh, they're showing that it's going to be tilt-wall within, well, they identified as being tilt-wall and uh as previously addressed and discussed. And then it's, again, they're showing the storefronts and then the doors. And this is just another side elevation of the proper project. This here, this is their construction schedule. They haven't updated the schedule. I'm sorry, it's a little small. I'll tell you what it says. They're showing in the second quarter, third quarter and fourth quarter of this year that they're working on design. They're probably a little behind on some of this because they're waiting for approvals and we as a city moved their meeting dates. But I still, I've had discussions and they're still thinking that, you know, in, in twenty twenty-five, the first quarter of twenty-six, that they hope to have this designed and constructed within that period of time. Uh, this just shows again, our PUD ordinance requires that you provide a conceptual drainage plan. Again, this isn't not the document that we are approve off. Well, this is, this whole document's based on zoning and land use. If this is approved, they will be required to come in and go through the full permitting process and submit engineer draining plan, drainage plans and, and all the different uh reviews that we require before we issue building permits. So again, this is just required a cons- conceptual plan to show that they've considered these elements as they're putting their design together. This is their lighting plan. And that's, uh, concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions you guys may have.
Do you have an exhibit to show us the northern por- northern property?
Exhibit two, I think it was.
That shows us the uh, the northern property and who owns that property that's north of there? Isn't that owned by the port?
Let me do this. I have one of our previous exhibits from one of our previous presentations and I think I have that. So this is the location of this property right here. And so as you look at this map, this is transwestern. This is all port property all the way down to this C three. And then there's still one remnant track right here that is not owned by the port at this time.
Who is, do you know, is that an individual that owns that?
It's an individual that owns.
Right. Can you show us the, the traffic uh diagram, the traffic diagram of One Forty-Six? Do you, you, did you bring that with you?
So this is, this is the area. So this is the overpass area. This is the feeder streets coming from the south to the north. This is the existing condition of uh the Red Bluff intersection as you go to the east towards Old One Forty-Six. That's what it looks like now. What it's going to look like, once it's reconstructed over the next year, is it will be three lanes going to the east and three lanes coming back to the west. And again, they're making modifications to the underpass that will uh look much like what they're designing here. I don't have a, a, the drawing of the Old One Forty-Six corridor within these two drawings. However, Old One Forty-Six is. However, old 146 is, within this plan set is shown to be four lanes. So currently it's two lanes and they're going to widen old 146 to four lanes as part of this project.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, who's going to, who's going to widen the road right there to four lanes because of this project? Tech dot?
That's correct, Tech dot. It's part of the existing Tech dot project that where they're widening the overpass, modifying those, that intersection and modifying old State Highway 146 as part of the project from Red Bluff back to Fairmont Parkway.
And that's going to happen regardless?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's in process.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody who wants to speak for or against?
Wayne, state your name and address, Wayne.
Wayne Rutledge, 1709 Dolphin. The railroad tracks, isn't there some proposed railroad tracks that go on the northern side?
I can't, I can't discuss this. You just have to speak for.
Well, no, he can, it's a, it's a public meeting.
Yeah, but the rail spur is.
Oh, the rail spur is not, but yes, there is a rail spur. Just to answer your question. It's, it's north of this.
Right.
Larry Bourne, 4517 South Womingo. Several times, I use that red bluff all the time. So I'm really kind of curious of the timeframe of fixing that intersection. There's 100 foot of red bluff between old 146 and 146 and the traffic is crazy. So what's the timeframe on that?
We've been, we've been told it's going to begin in January?
Yes, we're about eight months at this point. Tech dot thinks they'll be out there about eight months. Both of the detention areas on both sides of that intersection have to be cleared. Once they, Weber finalizes the current contract for the corridor and they'll prep up the detention pond and then there's a transformer set that has to be moved by Center Point as well.
So eight months at the minimum?
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public meeting. 5.0, all business. 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-17. A request for approval of the final planned unit development PUD to create a world-class freezer facility planned unit development comprising 134,632 square foot freezer warehouse, 84 vehicle parking spaces and 19 tractor trailer truck loading spaces approximately located on 7.9 acres tract of land. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Seabrook, Texas, Appendix A Comprehensive Zoning Article II Administration, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map by rezoning 7.19 acres situated in abstract 52 of the Ritson Morrison, Ritson Morris survey in Seabrook, Harris County, Texas, generally located west of old State Highway 146, east of State Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road and south of Port Road and being more particularly described in Exhibit A from C2, medium commercial district and LI light industrial district to a PUD planned unit development for development of 134,632 square foot freezer warehouse, 84 vehicle parking spaces and 19 tractor trailer truck loading spaces, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith, providing for a penalty in amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability. Move to approve 5.1. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes. 6.0, new business. I'm sorry, 5.2, here a presentation, consider and take all appropriate action on an extending video recording and live streaming to all boards and commissions. Gail.
All right, Mayor and Council, I'll pull up a presentation. I'm going to be relying on Mick that's coming down from our control room right now that's working the control panel. From our last council meeting, Councilor Rasko had motioned for us to come back and do some research and Councilor Hammond on the cost for extending our live streaming to not only city council, but to other boards and commissions. And working with Councilor Rasko, we were working on which ones of those boards and commissions. Staff has prepared a presentation and we have given you supplemental information in hard format before you today to kind of recaps the number of meetings that we've had for city council over 2023, in addition to some of our additional special committees. So we'll be referencing your hard copy that's not part of your agenda packet. The first slide that's in your attachment is a recap of what we are currently doing. So right now, we like to refer to in-house prospect of Mick being up in our newly developed control room, operating the cameras that's in our council chambers. We first started the pilot program with doing video recording of the council and we've applied her benefit packet, or her personnel costs with a benefit package to derive the personnel numbers that we're talking about. At the last council meeting, we also introducing live stream understood that we're going to have some IT personnel needs as we also look at doing this. So we'll kind of differentiate when we talk about one general fund employee as opposed to the scenarios that we have two. You want to go ahead and go up? Did you, I don't know if you loaded this, I can't get this in presentation format.
Um, I can pull it up.
Okay. Well, she's pulling hers up, we'll get it in a little bit bigger format so that you can see it. But again, staying on this slide, the current middle slide that you, part of the slide that you see right here is we've moved in this meeting to live streaming. So preparation for live streaming with all of the features that she does, we go into a little bit more time and that was shown on the last presentation. So monetarily wise, that equates with hours approximately 16,400. That's about 16 hours a month. This is also factoring in that we'll have at least a few hours of our IT technician being on call that will alleviate if our internet connection or anything in the live streaming process goes down, we'll have the IT available at the control panel as well. This will also account for a small amount of cross-training. Right now, Mick is the single person on staff that is responsible for this, so she's absent, vacation or otherwise, we will need a backup person. Right now, she's in the process of training person number two, that's an IT technician. However, if we kept this in-house, we would definitely see that we would need cross-training of multiple employees to be able to, to step in as needed in the control room. The last column over on the right is looking at if we start to add additional meetings. That would be council in addition to, originally when we put this together, all of the different meetings, but we went back and that's your supplemental that you have in front of you. Looking at just 2023, the city council had 27 and with city council and just looking at three of the main, which is BOA, EDC and P&amp;Z, we had 58 meetings. So a lot of the proposals that Mick put together, we'll be looking at here in a minute for a third party, looks at packages of 25. So that's another reason we'll reference this sheet. The overall cost for this last one of adding additional meetings again, is looking at the added cost of Mick, factoring in some IT time, cross-training for approximately 75 meetings. And we have an ongoing personnel, or excuse me, ongoing software cost that allows the indexing that you see when you go onto the website. Mick is going to explain some of the additional equipment that will be needed in different scenarios.
So the general idea of this is outfitting the conference room for when we've got those meetings that may happen over there, such as for joint. And based off of my build and pricing, I can get away with 2,500, but that's just in a conference room. If we need to do it on off-site location, if we need to bring it to Public Works or any other off-site, we would need an entire mobile setup, which I have allotted about
Okay, so I know that you asked for costs and we wanted to also insert additional option to be aware of. As we started this, this was a pilot program and as we've progressed into live streaming, there is a service that a lot of our neighboring cities take advantage of. Swaget is a pre-bid third party that's off-site, available 24/7, that run meetings remotely. So in the instance of P&amp;Z, BOA, EDC, we have a secretary that sits where our city secretary is sitting now. They assist with the meetings and then we would need additional personnel to be in the control room to operate all of this in-house. So the outsource and bringing this to you is to look at two different options in your considerations of not only in-house costs, but if we outsource this. So looking on the left column, you can see remote option one shows you that a basic one camera setup, and that would be not doing picture in picture, and we have an example of that in just a minute, but basic one camera, a third party for up to 75 meetings could be remote and contracted for a little over 22,000 with equipment cost of 9,500. The 9,500 is a one-time and that would be pulled from the PEG fund. The 22,000, we could pull that initially from PEG, one year to do the install in the first contract. From thereafter, it will be a reoccurring cost that will hit your general fund. Remote option two, we've got just some visuals there, but this is going to need additional cameras. So this is four cameras that allow what we're currently seeing and what Mick runs with her expertise in the control box now. These will be screenshots that would change from person to person, would have graphics, picture in picture, and so this would be a little bit different than what we're calling the basic and the one camera. There is additional cameras that are required for this company to be able to access them and network with them. The 60,000 again is a one-time cost that could come out of PEG, but would be required to do this type of remote option. With 75 meetings for all of those features, it is more expensive, so we're looking at 39,000, a little over 39,000 for that contract. Wait, go ahead and explain that.
So here's kind of showing the visual representation of basic versus what we're calling the premium level. Basic level, the one camera in the back and it stays like that the entirety of council. Premium level, we have an example from last council meeting and it shows that we've got multiple cameras, we're able to show who's talking at the same time that they're giving a presentation, as well as what agenda item we're on.
So the next two slides summarizes basically the cost information. So we'll run through these and then take any questions you may have. On the basic level, again, thinking as a one camera, if we keep this in-house, your far left corner is what we're doing now. On your right, you'll see option A is keeping this in-house, adding the boards and commissions, and that would be a little over 30,000 with the one-time equipment cost of 7,500. Doing an outsource option of approximately 75 meetings would also be approximately 9,500 of one-time equipment cost. That contract level would be approximately $22,200 to outsource that. So again, we're showing you options of in-house to outsource if this were to be a direction. Again, from staff's perspective and management, we are relying on one personnel that's highly trained to be able to do this. Having someone that's cross-trained that may not have been in the box for six months could introduce some issues of being able to get up to speed again. So this would be, I think, not only cost-effective, but it would also be something as far as personnel-wise that would be helpful if you want to move in that direction.
And so here's kind of the premium level, which is keeping city council meetings at the level that we have kind of gotten used to. So leaving it in-house, council only, just showing our base level essentially, 16,470. The first one would be bringing in in-house, all public meetings. It stays the same as if it was all boards and commissions outsourced because we just still need somebody up there in the event of the basic level. And then option B is kind of this hybrid of going and having someone in the control room during council meetings and then just leaving a basic camera wide shot for all the, the remaining boards and commissions. And these prices are based off of roughly 25 city council meetings and 50 other. However, based off of the 2023 numbers, it's more like 30 council and then it just, we wouldn't have to designate a certain number for each, we would just have the flat number and it would be utilized for whatever meeting it needs. And then option C is outsourcing all public meetings with, again, maintaining the level that we've got here in city council, but extending it to all of our boards and commissions or the, the main three. So, and that's 39,970 with the one-time 60,000.
How much do we have in the PEG fund now?
We're projected for year end to have roughly about $80,000 in fund balance.
So the one-time PEG cost to outsource really isn't out of pocket, so to speak. It's being funded through PEG.
Right, the first year, we, with installation and putting in the equipment, we've looked at the state law, it would be ability for us to take the first year out of all of PEG. From that point forward, that contract cost is, becomes a reoccurring cost and that becomes general fund.
But the difference between what we're doing right now and, go back a slide, I'm sorry. Right here. If we're doing all in-house meetings, it's 30 grand compared to council outsourced, which is 37, so it's additional 7,000. I know it's, I know it's 20 grand more than we're doing right now, but if we're going to do all meetings, that's the total cost on a premium level if we want the four cameras.
For council alone, correct.
For council.
I think it's less than, less meetings. I don't think there's any reason you need to do every single committee, open spaces and trails. I don't think people are going to watch to see where John Cogge Shell's going to plant a tree. They might be interested, but I think the three main ones plus council is the ones that we need to do.
So if you look at your sheet right there, you can see that even just following the 2023 BOA, P&amp;Z, EDC, that still, plus including council, still allocates, it was 68, 50, 58? And so that is already in the above packages of 25, but would already put us over the 50.
It would still be the 75 meeting cost.
I have a question. Would all the meetings have to occur in council chambers?
So, no. This, showing the 12,000 one-time PEG looks at the outsourced equipment, 9,500 and then the conference room build out, so it could be in council chambers or the conference room.
Okay, but would be an option B. Okay, so.
Mayor. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So originally I had, I thought open spaces and trails to record those as well, but after thinking about a little bit more and hearing some feedback from the committee members, I would like to take that off the table and keep it all at city hall and not have to worry about recording at Public Works. So then we would, we wouldn't need that $5,000 mobile equipment and would just be able to upgrade the, the conference room back there for $2,500. the conference room back there for $2,500. And we'd still be over 50 probably, or close, but any other special joint meetings or anything else that comes up, we'd still have the ability to record, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we seem to have difficulty and challenge in the past in getting people to even be on the boards and the commissions. I have some concern that some of these folks, knowing that they're going to be recorded, let not want to be on it. So, we've already voted the fact that city council is going to be live-streamed. We've all approved that. I think that's, that's fine. But I'm just not so sure that the purpose of having, doing all the other meetings, so some, could you explain to me, someone, explain to me why is it that we want to do this? What is the point?
I mean, they're being recorded anyway, it's just audio, it's very antiquated. It's very antiquated. If you ever listen to a planning and zoning meeting on audio, it's very hard to hear who's talking saying what, because unless you know those people, you don't know who's saying what. It's, it's hard to fast-forward and go back, and you can't, you know, you can't go like we can on council and go to item 7.2 or whatever and index that like you can on the council meeting. I think it's needed. I've been doing my best to try to get people to apply, because I know now's the time to apply for the committees, so I think we've gotten some applications more than, maybe than in the past years. So I think this would be a positive thing to, to get people to get more involved in the committees and the meetings.
But is it, is it, everything that goes to these meetings, these boards, come to the city council anyway, right?
Eventually.
I didn't, it comes to the city.
Well, the main reason, the number-one reason is, everything that you do in a government is transparent, 100% transparent. The only thing that's not is when we go back into executive session, and you can actually talk about executive session, you just can't talk about certain things in executive session. But that's the whole reason. So if someone doesn't want to get on a board or commission because they may be filmed, and what they're saying could be recorded and the people get to hear, I don't want them on it. Because it's, it's everything, you can't do it secretly, that's the whole thing.
What was the input from planning and zoning regarding this?
Did we get, what do you mean? I didn't know that was a...
Well, I mean, it's your, your item, and I was just wondering if you talked to planning and zoning and got their input.
No, because it's council's decision.
Okay.
I have a question. We are being transparent right now. It's being recorded, correct? Everything is being documented like where the law is required, correct?
Right, so our agenda portal holds our minutes, did the audio file, and it holds the, now recording.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, because we're, we're making major budget cuts right now, because we're in a deficit. And you want to go in and spend roughly a lot more to be transparent, and I think we are being very transparent right now. If somebody wants to listen to those tapes, they can listen to them, they're being discussed. I understand we need to move up onto the technologies, and I understand we probably can with some of the recordings, but I just think being us doing what we're now in-house is perfectly fine, I think. I think we're following what needs, is required. The public hasn't said, "I want all this, I need you to spend this money, come up here, we need to be a lot more transparent, blah, blah, blah." That's just my two cents, because I think this is a lot of money, and if the public hasn't really come up here and spoke that we need to make these changes, I, I don't think we need to spend the money, because that's a lot of money right now. And we're talking about cutting, you know, and doing all this other stuff. I just think it's a lot, that's just my opinion.
Okay, well then, we have a proposal on the table, not today, but for a 3% increase for the employees. For staff, so, I was, I've said no to that, because right now, no one's getting a raise. So when it comes to money, we got to be careful with that, so.
Sorry, I also like, Mike, this is going to be, I know we're in a deficit this year, but this is not going to be out of expense this year. We, we can use the PEG fund money that we already have, for one. Secondly, taking this responsibility out of our in-house employees gives them an opportunity to do things that they're not able to do right now. They're going to have a lot more time on, in their work schedule to be able to do other things than this. So I think it's a win for.
Yeah, but you're showing in-house, so then you're telling me you want to go to the C, which is almost $100,000.
That would be $39,000, correct, so, yeah, that's, that's the one I would like to go with, and that's, we have the funds for it.
Saying that...
No, that's not correct.
It's a one-time fee of 60,000 that can come out of the PEG fund, but so 40,000 every year that's going to be added to the budget.
The first year, she can add that to PEG funds.
I, I really have a question as to why, why opening spaces and trails, you want to take them out? I mean, they're, you know, what Joe said, if you're going to be in government, you need to be transparent, and if you don't want to be recorded on that committee.
Because, from my understanding, they're not organized or set up that way in our charter to be, to be like, to set up, they're not set up the same.
Really?
Is that not correct?
Can you be more specific? They're a, a, a committee that's appointed by council, they make recommendations for spending considerable amounts of money. I would think that, that the folks that are paying the freight, which is our citizens, would like to know what's going on.
Well, we still have the opportunity to do that, but the 75 meetings, the same price, won't cost us anything. They'd have to meet here, that's the only issue.
As the discussion goes forward, I would like to ensure that they're included in this.
Well, I think, I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about transparency, and we're talking about convenience. All of our city meetings are open to the public. You're all here, you're, you're hearing what we say as we say it. You know, it, it is a convenience to have these, be able to sit in front of your TV at night and watch this, if anybody does. But, but again, it, it's not a matter of transparency. So I think, I think we're being very transparent in the sense that we have all of our public meetings in front of the audience. So it's more of a convenience, and is the convenience worth this to people that are going to watch on their home televisions as to, as to this discussion? Maybe. I, I have no problem with doing public meetings or, or recording and broadcasting them. I think we should. My question is, do we need to go to four cameras? You know, we've been doing it with a single camera right now, people are watching.
No, we have multiple cameras in here, we just have to replace them, because the ones that work with their programming, which I thought the ones we were installing last year would be able to adapt to the new software, but apparently, it, it doesn't work like that.
If we wanted, we can still send them signals, it would just be their, a single encoder, and so we can feed them whatever we want, but it would just be the one feed. Those cameras that are there specifically, each would send its own feed to them, and they would be able to decide which ones they want. So we can send them one, but they would be able to see all of them and then decide then.
So if everybody met in this room, if all of our commissions met in this room with council, all of them, we could still record and broadcast just the way we are today?
Yes.
Just with additional meetings? Instead of 25 city council meetings, there'd be 75 or 58, whatever that number is? Just the way we are?
Yes.
With just additional staff cost?
Yes.
Do we have that number?
That would be, be roughly 30,310, 27,000 of that being personnel.
So that's all meetings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? So... Does anyone, does anybody want to give staff a recommendation as to how we move forward with this?
I'd like to make a motion to, can you go up the screen to the last slide? To approve the outsourcing of all public meetings, option C.
I'll second that.
We're not voting on it, we're giving council, or we're giving the city a, staff a recommendation as to what we want. Oh, it says, okay, we are, we are, I'm sorry, we are voting on this.
You know, before I could support it, I, I would like to get input from each of the committees that are going to be affected by this. I mean, I'm not saying no or yea or nay, but I would like to get their input since they're going to be impacted. And are we, are they all going to meet in here? Are they going to meet at Public Works?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're all going to meet here, they're all going to have to meet here.
All of them are going to be meeting in here, then I...
You're the one who wanted OST.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying, it's all, I mean, it's ethics committee, you know, every, everyone that we've got, if we're going to do one, we should do them all.
Yeah.
Freedom equal.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm fine with it too, but if we're going to do it all, and we're going to do it all here, why can't we use currently what we have? Why do we have to jump to the more expensive one? Go back a couple of slides, the other one is only 30,000. I'm okay with that as well, that way you're recording and doing everything that is required, right, Tom? Is that correct?
But that's also a lot of staff hours. And then if we outsourced it, we gain all those staff hours back.
I understand, but you're also, okay.
The two, Aaron, council, the objective of showing you all in-house as opposed to outsource is if you, if you do want all public meetings, it will end up changing her job description in essence, so that's why they outsource. And then also looking at that total top cost from in-house to outsource, if you'll see, there's, there's a price difference, and that was just trying to be, you know, looking at it from a fiscal perspective, not only from our staff and changing duties, but just really financially. That's why I wanted to look at the outsource as well.
So, so what is your recommendation? You run the city. Tell, tell me what your thoughts are on which one you would consider, because this is your department. I can't answer that question? Okay, never mind.
That's not Gail's decision.
Yeah, it's, it's really a policy decision, just if you, if you move, I just want to make sure that you're aware of the outsourcing that would assist with the, the staff duties.
Well, when I talked to the city manager earlier, the outsourcing was a good viable option for staff.
So we take the 60 grand out of PEG, pay for the upfront cost one time, recurring cost is 40 grand. Go back one slide, please.
Keep going.
Go back one slide, yeah. So essentially, it's, no, one more. I'm looking for it, there it is. So instead of, it's, it's 30 grand compared to 40 grand, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Difference is a 10 grand.
Can, can you tell us what the annual income from PEG is?
I think we're at 18,000. Let Mike pull that, so he can give you the latest.
You don't have that off the top of your head, Mike?
I try and forget all of it. 30,000, roughly 30,000.
Okay, and, and this is, this is a, a tax on the internet...
Public channel.
Public channels, right, correct?
Yes, Comcast and...
AT&amp;T.
Currently, it is Comcast as the cable provider, not necessarily.
Cable providers. Let me ask you this, what happens if they go to towers and you're getting your signal from a tower and not from the fiber optics?
I would think they would not pay, it's basically like an easement fee.
So in other words...
Use our easement.
Okay, so if they...
And so, if, yeah, if, if they go...
Tower.
Digital.
Then we go zip.
We lose that money.
Okay. And when the PEG funds can be used for a one-time expense for equipment, et cetera, but they can't be used for reoccurring?
It cannot be used for reoccurring or personnel, is my understanding. It's basically just capital assets.
Okay, so what we're really looking at down the road is, this will all be funded general fund?
It is a general fund expense that you're committing tonight into the future.
Well, you know, when I'm looking at it, it, for, for 10 grand, it kind of makes sense. Gail, you said something about it would change Mick's classification?
Right, so Mick is, half of her duties are general fund, and so with committing to all of these, with her being the control box individual in-house, that's going to drastically change her job description. We're going to have to basically kind of add this as an additional job duty for her permanently. We're in the pilot program, so we haven't done anything permanent. Again, putting all of our eggs in, in one basket if she's not available is my concern, not only from her duties and rearranging her job description based on what we hired her for, but really that backup plan. So if you're, if you're wanting to do live streaming, if something is, if she's not available and our backup doesn't, is not available, we may be scrambling, may not be able to satisfy doing a live stream successfully based on those personnel issues. We're limited, we're small staff, so it would probably be IT. We just got three IT people back, they stay busy, so what we would do as salary persons, again, is take the IT person, probably take them off three hours of the day, we'll comp time them, so they're taking three hours out of their normal duties again. So we've got two people that we're basically rearranging, so that's why, again, I believe the outsource, minus this is a policy decision for y'all, but if you want to move forward, the outsourcing, I think, is a very good option, and it's a lower cost ultimately.
So could you go back to the outsource number for me?
Again, I know there's a lot of information. The basic that we're talking about in the 22,000 option is going back to one camera. So the slide that she's providing, that picture-in-picture and what we're calling the graphics at the bottom, the bells and whistles on the right would go away, you'd be looking at basic level on left, but if we did all of it, the 22,000 outsource would actually capture 75 meetings in this room, and then do a $22,000 impact back to the general fund, which is the lower of the options.
This is kind of related to it. Have we gotten the numbers from HCAD yet?
Yes, sir.
And I would just remind council what happened in Pearland, when they went forward with the budget and making spending, and then HCAD came out with some really different numbers, and they got $10 million in debt. I would suggest that we, and we're meeting on the budget, what, two weeks?
Next Wednesday.
Next week. Would you be agreeable to table this until our budget, and then we can talk about the whole picture instead of kind of piecemealing?
I mean, we're going to have to, down the road, you know, pay for this regardless, but...
I agree. I, I have no, no problem with that at all, I'm just saying I would like to have the whole picture.
Sure.
Or I could vote yes on that.
Sure.
Well, thank you. Okay, hang on, hang on. So... I'm still confused.
I just, another, that's another reason why I don't really want to table it, because it's, we're going to have to talk about this all again, and anyways.
Okay, which one were you talking about on this premium and basic level? Could you go to that last one?
Item C.
That one.
Well, C gets you all of the bells and whistles, all the graphics, all the picture-in-picture, and that's the 40,000, almost 40,000 general fund impact. The reverse of that, going back, if you will, to the basic, is on B here, the 22,200, this is still a contract, and it's the 75 meetings. It's, the difference is the camera. We wouldn't be changing camera views, it'd be one camera view.
Okay, I like the last one.
Yeah, if we're going to do it, yeah.
Yeah, because it's only 10,000 more.
Yeah.
And it sends, the city staff goes back to original job duties.
Right.
Thought that's a good thing.
Right.
If it has all the bells and whistle, might as well do it right.
Okay. Well, I'm a little bit with, with... Okay. Well, I'm a little bit with, with Councilmember Hammond here because we asked City to go back and cut a number of items to, to balance the budget. And we still don't have the, the budget, or we don't have the appraisals back. And so, you know, now we're asking them to find an additional cost. So I would, I think we could wait a week to see the budget. I'm not saying that we aren't going to do it. I'm actually saying we are going to do it. But I would like to see where the numbers come from because we're going to have to find money to cut something else now.
But don't we, but again, we have the PEG funds for this.
Not just for the, just for the upfront cost. We still have staff costs next, next season. I mean, during next budget season, we've got this cost. It's.
40,000 every year moving forward.
Yeah, so we, we're going to have to find an additional 40,000 in this budget to handle this.
Plus, plus we have, these two on the budget is, we really start to need to looking five years down the road for major expenditures that are coming up in terms of new HVA, HVA units for the buildings, roofs for the buildings, et cetera, the major expenses. We just can't continue looking at next 12 months.
Well, for this, for this, I don't think waiting a week until we get the appraisals, if we ever get the appraisals, is a big deal. I would just like to see where we're going to find another 40 grand. We're going to find it, but at whose expense? I think, I, I don't want to go into it blind. We'll find, we'll find 40 grand for next budget, but I don't know from where. So I would like to see it before I vote on this also. So, Jackie, you made the motion?
Can I take my, do I, do we need to?
Somebody can make a motion to postpone and it changes.
Can I change my motion?
Yeah.
To table it until the August 28th meeting?
Thank you. All in, a second, a second. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks.
New business, 6.1. Is that where I am? Yeah. Consider to take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-15. A request to change the zoning classification of land located at 4017 Toddville Road, Seabrook, Texas 77586. From the current cap classification of R1 Single Family Detached Residential District to R2 Single Family Detached Residential District Small Lots. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Seabrook, which is part of the city code of ordinances, Appendix 8 Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2, Administration, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map. By rezoning 16.479 acres of land situated in the Ritz and Morrison Survey, Abstract Number 52, City of Seabrook, Harris County, Texas, located at 4017 Toddville Road, which is located west of Toddville Road, south of West Flamingo Drive, and north of Mystic Village Lane, being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A from R1 Single Family Detached Residential District to R2 Single Family Detached Residential District Small Lots for the development of a single-family detached residential development. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith. Providing for a penalty in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation for any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability.
Move to approve 6.1.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. 6.2. Consider to take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2024-11. A request for approval of final planned unit development PUD to create 5815 Old Highway 146 Monroe Quiet Warehousing Project comprising of two 23,980 square foot tilt-wall constructed warehouses located on a 3.695 acre tract of land. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Seabrook, Appendix A Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2, Administration, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map. By rezoning 3.695 acres situated in an Abstract 52 of the Ritz and Morrison Survey in Seabrook, Texas, Harris County, generally located east of Old Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road, and south of Port Road, and being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A from C2 Medium Commercial District to PUD Land Unit Division Development for the development of two tilt-wall warehouses, each containing approximately 24,000 square feet of floor space, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith. Providing for a penalty not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation for any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability.
Move to approve 6.2.
Second.
Discussion. John.
Mayor, I just want to say, I really wish this would have been an extension of the RV park personally. I'd hate to see more warehouses, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Is the, is the owner here?
The applicant is here.
Is the applicant here? Is there any questions of the applicant, Council? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Passes. 6.3. Consider to take all appropriate action on the approval of Resolution 2024-19 Seabrook Economic Development Corporation Bylaws Amendment, amending the term and allowing for staggered terms of directors. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Seabrook, Texas, adopting revisions and amendments to the bylaws for the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation. Gail?
Mayor and Council, this is coming over from our Seabrook Economic Development Corporation. We, on the exhibit before you can show the mark out area, this was previously amended. We, I don't think we had enough applicants in the last round. And it ultimately threw us off, I think, in that motion that was made here at Council. And so we're coming back through the EDC to the Council to revise the dates, basically, to try this again, to keep your EDC members staggered. So what you see in red and underlined is a revision, basically, of dates. This board, all at this point expire in January of 2025. And you'll be going through the application process. It's already opened up with the city secretary's office. You'll be doing interviews. So at that time, when you make the appointments in January, you can make a decision at that point who you would want to assign to a short term as opposed to the long term to get this process started again. Any questions?
So right now, the way it stands, that everybody on EDC would be off, all but one.
Correct. All the terms right now expire, minus the two council members, y'all's running concurrents. But yes, yours would. Your other appointed members, right now, we've set with the last council action, all at the same date.
Can, can you allow the members of EDC to, to select whether they want to be appointed for a two or three-year term?
We can go back and make those, to see if they want to make a recommendation in your appointment process. I did inform them that with the new process, they have to reapply, and they'll go through that interview process.
Yeah, everybody will apply in January, right?
Right. So between now and.
Yeah, they're applying. Okay, okay. In October. Okay, okay. Any more discussion? Any, any questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented by staff for the appointment of members to the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. 6.4. Consider to take all appropriate action on the improvement, on the approval of, of an engagement letter for auditing services with Crow. The contact extension is for auditing and reporting on the city's financial statement for the year ending September 30 of 2024 in the amount not to exceed $58,500.
Good evening. Yes. It was brought to my attention that our current contract with our auditors has come to, come to expire. This is an engagement letter to, to, to have them audit our 2024 books. We, we will go out for RFQ to select a, a new auditing firm between now and, and the end of next year. Unfortunately, if we start that process now, we're already kind, they, they need to be coming out to do our interim audit. So we're looking to engage them for the next fiscal year audit.
Is this, is this their standard fee paid in the past?
What was it last year?
So we had a single audit. I believe we paid 75,000 last year. I would have to, I'd have to review that and.
Was it the same company?
So Crow is a, they purchase, or Belt Harris was acquired by Crow, which is a national, Crow is a larger auditing firm. They're, they're a national firm, and they, they wanted to get presence in Texas. So they merged with, with Belt Harris.
But it's, it's essentially the same firm we've had for the last 20 years.
It is. I mean, the partners that are engaging us are, they have a much larger team. Like I said, they're, they're nationwide. My understanding is they're looking to get into governmental auditing.
Are we not required to change auditors every 36 months?
We are not required. It is, our, our policy had been that we would go out for selection of auditors every five years. And that's, that's what has lapsed. So, you know.
Yeah, because best practices is every five to seven years. I, I looked that up. And so.
Well, and, and to.
But it's not the law, but it's.
And it's not the law. And prior to me becoming the finance director, the finance director at the time brought in Belt Harris. And they had done extensive work to, that showed that changing auditors oftentimes was, created undue unnecessary burdens and difficulties. And the council at that time agreed. And we actually extended past that five to seven years that you're referring to.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 6.4.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 6.5. Consider to take all appropriate action on the approval of a three-year inter-local government agreement with, from 2024 to 27 for school crossing guards between the city of Seabrook and the Clerk Creek Independent School District for crossing guard services for the flat fee of $12,500 a year for two guards.
Move to approve 6.5.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. 6.6. Discussion and possible action regarding life vac choking systems for police and emergency vehicles.
So I did talk to the chief about this a little bit. I just, I didn't actually follow through with a lot on this, but I saw it. I've actually given the Heimlich maneuver. I broke three ribs and saved the person's life. They weren't very appreciative of it. But that's what happens. But then I saw this life vac thing, and I was like, hey, this could work. Then, right after I saw that and I talked to the chief, there happened to be a police officer who saved a kid from choking on a piece of gum or candy. And he used a life vac, and they actually have the video of it, and just made me think. It's pretty inexpensive, the way I hear. If every cop or every police car had one, and then even our emergency, our EMTs had him in the ambulance, I think it would be a good thing. And then I also included training. I don't think there's a lot of training. I think you just place it over the mouth, and it's like a, it's like a little vacuum, and it sucks it right out. And if it saves a life, it's worth, you, you, you know, you just can't put a price on it. So I actually think it's pretty good. I'd like to hear some other views, but I just think it's, it's something I think we could afford, and it's probably wise to have.
So can we have chief talk?
Yes, Councilman Mayor, this is not something we budgeted for. I don't have any experience with the device. I've seen television commercials on, on the device. I'm not sure of its efficacy or anything. If you'd like, if you direct me to, I can get you prices on it for the budget review that we're going to conduct next week. Be more than happy to bring that to you, if, if that's what you'd like. I would defer to EMS because this is their corner of the world, not mine.
My question would be, not only price, but an assessment from other organizations that have used it, and what, what kind of results have been getting, you know, that kind of a assessment and evaluation.
Council, about a year ago, I reevaluated everything that we carry currently on the ambulance. Shelf space on the ambulance is very valuable. Shelf, bag space is very valuable to us. And I did take a look at it. Did some considerable research on it. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, it has its place in our society. But for us, it's not, it has not been endorsed by American Heart Association, nor has it been endorsed by American Red Cross. So with that being said, the Heimlich maneuver, the training that we do every two years, that we currently do in-house, has proven in the field. And my worry about putting something like this out into the field would be, okay, they're forgetting about what the, what their training is and going to a device that's not been proven. And, you know, you, when you watch these things, you, they say FDA, it's FDA regulated. And basically, what that means, that device is a class-two suction device. And FDA regulates the market, but they don't approve it. In order to be approved, it has to go through a series of tests prior to hitting the market. And none of that has been approved. And further aboard, Dr. Madine is not very, he doesn't, you know, he's an ER director. He sees what works in the field. I don't feel like I could convince him to allow us to keep that on the ambulance. Like I say, it's got its place in the market, and I think it is a good thing for certain people. But for us, I don't think it would be a very good measure. And oh, and since inception, just so you know, since inception, we've ran 11 choking calls. And out of the 11, two, two, the one that you're talking about in the city were actual choking calls. And the one that was relieved by a police officer, and the second one was relieved by Director, Director Luriziscopy. We have multiple ways of handling choking victims on the ambulance. And the cost on them, by the way, is $73 a unit.
73?
And one-time use. See, it does have its place, but I just, you know, for us, when I reevaluated a year ago, I couldn't put it on ambulance there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there any action want to be taken on this, Joe?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Question, oh, chief. I just got another question. So if, if we used them, or if we got them and used them and it failed, what's our liability for using an unapproved product?
It's, again, fortunately, in the state of Texas, we have such good Samaritan laws. If you're doing something with good intent, the liability is very minimal. I mean, it's just like anybody else in, in the field doing it. The judges look at it that way. It's a regulated product, product. It's in the market. It works. It has its place. It does. I've seen the videos and stuff that you're talking about. I know it works. But unfortunately, a lot of the data that's come back is, came back on the testing being on mannequins. And for us, working with a distressed patient, sometimes it's very hard to create those things and create the seal and get them to work. But as far as liability, it's, it's very minimal.
So the same thing with defibrillators, I see.
Exactly. Defibrillator's a little more expensive.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
What's your motion again?
To approve, to buy, approve.
To approve the life vac for the. To approve the life vac for the, you know, for the police cars and, and ambulance if they wanted them.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second. All in favor? All opposed? Fails. Seven point one, discussion and rules of procedure for a code of conduct for city council and all boards and commissions for the city of Seabrook. Rachel.
I have attached what is currently in place in our ordinances. And then I've also attached examples of what a code of conduct would be as opposed to a rules of procedure. We do have a bit of both already in place, but it, we do need some direction on where you guys would like us to go before we go about developing a possibly up to five, fifty-page rules of procedure manual, possibly. We want to make sure that's the route you want to take or is it that you're looking for a code of conduct? Or are you looking for anything different than is already in place? I just need a, a little direction. The plan is, once you kind of give me some guidance here, we'll get something in, in place for you to workshop and really kind of take it from there. I just want to know where you'd like to go with something like that.
Counsel, somebody ask you for this?
It actually, there were a couple of council members who did bring these up. One alluded to a rules of procedure, one alluded to kind of establishing a code of conduct. But we just want to make sure, is that your intention? Do, does everyone want us to proceed? That's number one. And two, so how, you know, do you want me to proceed with it? So.
I'd like to see some models of what other cities have done.
I've included some examples, a couple of examples, one of each in the agenda packet for tonight. Now, I can gather more if, if you want to look at more, but they're, they're essentially sort of the same. A rules of procedure sort of brings what we have in place altogether in a, a manual type thing. It, it can actually go to council. It could also go to maybe boards and commissions. But it, it doesn't really establish a code of conduct that isn't already in place in our ordinances. So that's why I've, I've included what we do have in place for you to take a look at, maybe.
I, I would think that, yes, I'd like to see something that would demonstrate that whoever the candidate is, that they're a member in good standing of the community. You know, a citizen of, of Seabrook, they're not a felon. They don't owe money to the city.
That's already in there though.
I, I.
It is.
The code of conduct is more like how board members and council members are treating each other during meetings.
After meetings.
We have something sort of established already with some general guidelines, but I don't know what.
That say, we will not point a felon, a convicted felon?
That's state law.
That's a state, yeah.
Okay. And, and what about if somebody has outstanding debt to the city?
That's also in our charter.
Well, again, I don't think we want to discuss that right now. I think what we need to do is we need to get some additional. For instance, Gail just called up LaPorte's. I'd like a chance to go through it and I think we all would go through it, pick out some good things, bad things, whatever, and bring them back and let's put it all together and see what we want, how we want Rachel to, to, to proceed. Does that make sense? Because I haven't, I haven't seen LaPorte's. But I'd like to, I'd like some, some, some other cities, you know, there's no, no sense in starting all over. I, I think if we find something that we like, we can, we can try and adopt it. Does anybody else have any discussion on that?
I'd like to see our ethics, some more ethic rules as far as, like, it's only for our ethics. I think the only thing in our charter is just if it's a financial gain, right? So if we could go into that a little bit further and you can find, you know, other cities that have a little bit more in depth is the only thing I would say.
Okay. All right, so you got, you got some direction?
Yes, I have enough direction and we'll probably set up a workshop.
Right, so mayor, mayor and council, I would definitely, this is pretty lengthy discussion, so I will throw out a potential couple of dates to you guys to look at doing a workshop on this. We can create an outline with possibly merging a couple of these samples and then get into it section by section.
Okay. Seven point two, discussion on the code enforcement activities for the properties located at thirty-eight oh five and thirty-eight thirteen Nassau Road one, Seabrook, Texas, particularly regarding violations of the city's nuisance code. Joe?
Yeah, you want to put that picture up? This is just one of those things where when you drive into Seabrook from on Nassau one. Oh, did. Oh, no worries. But when you, when you drive in on Nassau one from El Lago, it's, there's a sign that says, Seabrook, population twelve thousand. That's a little antiquated because I think we're fourteen, but that's like a welcome to your city. And there's, there's a fence that's over the sidewalk. It's broken. There's dead trees. Palms cut off at the top, just a stump. That's actually a parking lot. That used to be Louis on the Lake a long time ago. It was actually a good restaurant. But the, there's supposed to be no grass there. That's a parking lot. You don't have, you don't have grass in your parking lot. So there should be no weeds. That just looks terrible. That, that blue thing, I think that's fallen down since this picture is taken, but it just doesn't look good. And so I've asked over and over and the, the owners of the land are supposed to take care of it. Well, what I'm saying is when you, it's like your first opportunity to have your, to meet someone and you look like a slob, but then you're going, hey, come do business here. No one's going to want to do business with, with that looking like that, in my opinion. So I'd like it cleaned up, stay cleaned up. It's been like this for seven years. It's been like this all the time. They, you know, they'll mow it once and they'll get it down, but it doesn't even look that good, in my opinion, because they hired, they're, they own the land, but they live far away, I think, and they're not going to spend a lot of money on it because, but now they've sold it. So they're supposed to build their, but I just like it cleaned up. But you had some information you were telling me earlier, so.
Yes, so just to refresh everyone's memory, this is, this property was approved as a planned unit development for the Highlands project. So it was, it's slated to be a high-rise apartment complex at some point in time. Our planning and development ordinance requires them to come in and give you all updates periodically on the progress of the project. They're due to do that. So I did reach out to Bill Neeson with Highlands Resources. He will be at the next meeting to give you guys that update. I also informed him that there's been a lot of discussion on the condition of the property and he's willing to address that. On the code enforcement side, we have been in contact with them. We've, the grass has been mowed when it's being mowed because we're influencing that activity through code enforcement. It, we haven't written any citations to this property or this property owner because the conversations we've had historically is it's a developer, it's an active development and we're supposed to be developer-friendly. So we're trying to be developer-friendly process and not start writing this new developer a bunch of citations to come to court. So we haven't done that. If, if that direction changes from council, we'll be more than happy to write the citations and send them through the municipal court process. Currently, we haven't. Again, we have some limitations. It's technically an undeveloped piece of property with that one building located on. So we got some limitations on when it gets to high grass and weeds and how they mow. You know, once those weeds and that grass gets over nine inches, we can require them to mow it. Staff's not defending the situation that it's, looks terrible and it needs to be addressed. It's just we haven't addressed it because we thought there would be some development occurring on the property where they're going to demo everything that's on that piece of property and start developing it. Again, I, I would like for the developer to have an opportunity to speak on the condition of this property and to address it. From a political side, because they tend to ignore us and they're not putting a lot of effort into it. And our last, our last action will be to start writing citations and send them through the municipal court process. That's, we, we've identified it as being a problem and again, they're not coming into compliance voluntarily without us staying on top of them on a regular basis. And at some point in time, if that is the last resort, typically for code enforcement, we'll start citing them and let municipal court deal with it. And I welcome any questions.
Does the developer, I'm sorry, go ahead. Does the developer own it already?
Developer does own it.
Okay.
That, that property was at one point in time owned by the Pappas Group and it has been conveyed to the developer. So they do own it.
When was the last time we cited him or, or contacted them about it? When was the last time we contacted them about?
I don't have that in front of me, but it hasn't, it's been recently. A lot of our communication with them has been through email. We haven't sent them a lot of letters because typically when, as Joe stated, they're not, they don't reside in our locally.
Sure.
And so when it gets in a bad condition, they've given us a contact. We email them and they typically in a few days come out and do the basics that they need to do to bring it back into compliance. And then it, you know, once it grows up again, we're contacting them again. There are issues with that structure. That structure is a tear-down structure. I think everybody can acknowledge that. We just haven't pursued it because again, we thought as the development moved forward from the staff perspective, that they would get torn down. At this point in time, they're not reacting. Again, staff's not disagreeing with the, the accusations or the statements that it needs to be taken care of. And we're more than willing to send it through the legal process. And again, maybe just the pressure politically from city council at the next meeting stating that we expect these things to be done. Can you provide us timetables? Maybe that'll help us as staff.
Okay, so do we want any action right now?
No, no, it's, it's just one of those things where I got a lot of buddies that come through Seabrook and they was going, what's the deal with that? And so it's just one of those things that reminded me to bring this up because, yeah, I, I obviously, when he's here, I'm going to say, hey, come on. If this was next door to you, where you lived, I don't think you'd like it. So, you know. And I understand that he's an out-of-town owner or whatever, but at the same time, you can make the piece look a little bit better than it is.
All right, very good. Eight point O, routine business. Eight point one, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including hurricane barrel, recovery efforts, Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects and the city Seabrook CIP projects. Gail?
Mayor, council, the recovery efforts on barrel are continuing. We did have to increase our emergency contract on our debris hauling. So we've had enough cubic yardage that, that had to bump from three hundred to four hundred. So our overall estimated cost on recovery is at six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Staff did meet recently with the FEMA team. They move in after a declared disaster. We had enough damages between our city assets, our emergency personnel and our debris removal that we will be submitting FEMA projects. At this point, they are seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match. So we will have some cost out of the general fund for our twenty-five percent match and we'll be coming back with that. We'll continue on our local disaster recovery and we'll have a ordinance that'll come back to finalize that and take that off soon. Center point announced and we also posted on social media for an open house that will be close to us. This was going to be down at the Pasadena Convention Center. So this has been sent out. They're also sending this out via their social media as well, but just wanted to make note that they'll be having an open house.
Gail, Mike had a question. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's still a lot of debris on lakeside. I'm sure you've seen some of the fences and stuff. So I just want to make sure that they're going to go and pick that stuff up because it looks like they missed it and it was there, but I don't know if they just didn't get that section or what, so.
Well, they're still doing vegetation, I think.
Are they? Okay, I'll just.
The second pass on the vegetation on the west sod. They will be going, every, every morning, Kevin and I and Joe, we'll sit down with the debris haulers and say, you've missed these areas. We're going to collect them.
Okay.
We, we know about them. We're going to address them.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Also, we are, it's on the website as well for people that we've got another link that if we've missed it, there's an opportunity for people to click on that link and it'll also send it over to us as well. So, as well as the drive-through that they're trying to catch it. Hopefully here in the next week and a half or so, we'll, we'll be wrapping that up on the debris. I'll ask FEMA. The Red Bluff project, or excuse me, the one forty-six project, main corridor from Red Bluff to ninety-six. Talking to the Tech dot representative, they are in the final phases. We've got the two contractors that are now merging. So we've got the Weber and the Landscape and then Williams Brothers on the north end. By November of twenty-twenty-four is what they're estimating right now. The Weber camp that we see at the corner of Red Bluff and one forty-six will hopefully be moved out. I think they've got one of the campers out at this point. You're starting to see some activity down there. They're doing some cleanup on the drainage in the intersection. There's driveway adjustments that you see on the east side of one forty-six. And then the detention ponds that we mentioned earlier in the meeting that are at that Red Bluff intersection. There's again, two different one forty-six projects, the one on the south side and both of them are extremely overgrown. They will be cleaned up and graded with both projects. The south side will be cleaned with this project, the east, or excuse me, the north detention pond with the project that goes back to Spencer. As Sean was talking, this is an exhibit that we were mentioning, so we can post this on the website as well. We've been circulating it. Brian's done an overlay, so this is by no means exactly to scale, but it does kind of back up what we were talking about with not only some of the projects, but what we're seeing in the transportation update section of this item for the four lanes going in, or excuse me, three lanes going into the intersection and then expanding to four lanes. The T that's represented in this exhibit are the approximate boundaries that are under the supervision of Tech dot. Beyond this, up towards the north, it turns into Harris County. So we are aware that we'll probably be talking about another transportation project that will finish old one forty-six to the north, up to Port Road. That'll marry this with a four-lane configuration. So again, this is the project that we've been talking about that will be in hopefully the eight-month lookout period.
Another quick question. When you go northbound on that and where the railroad tracks, are they going to redo, resurface that area? Because it's like really rough when you go over that.
Yes, we.
The other side is perfect how they fixed it. It's just this side is really bad. And I don't know if it's from the trucks or what, but it just needs to be smoothed out.
We have not had an update meeting with the rail spur with the Port of Houston contractor, but I will find out. I know the section that you're talking about. I, I believe there's some further repairs coming when they put the quiet zone mechanisms in there, but I'll double check and make sure. Not a lot of updates on our boards, commissions, on our CIPs. Don't have any further exhibits, but we're in that final phase with our wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, we did have some issues with a waterline breakage there at Toddville near Red Bluff. They'll be doing the last tie-in for that project. We're about sixty percent on the Seascape Waterline Project and we're moving along on the two interconnections. So we had one waterline interconnection near Geon and we're still getting some additional cost on the interconnect going up to Port. Did you have some?
I mentioned one thing. I did get a, received a call last week from a citizen at the corner of Red Bluff and one forty-six, coming from the north to the south. When you make that, there's a little turn lane that they created to go back down Red Bluff towards the west. It's all been rutted out in that location. It's become very dangerous. They did contact, the citizen brought it to my attention. Brian has reached out to Tech dot, so we have communicated with Tech dot the severity and the danger that they've created because this citizen actually made the statement that he saw a semi truck drive down in there and if it wasn't been for the axle, it probably could have tipped over. So I just wanted to report that we have reached out to Tech dot. We have acknowledged there's an issue there and we have reached out to them just to add to her, to Gail's report.
Thanks, Sean. Any other questions? Eight point two, monthly financial report for July twenty-twenty-four.
I had a question on the last one, real quick.
Yeah, actually, I had a question on the last one, real quick. I just was late getting to the mic. Hey, um, it, it's, back in 2017, 2018, we hired someone that has a drone and they were going to take pictures prior to, because it started in February of 2019, the, the, the 146 and you were going to take, like, they were taking photos every like month and we were going to put it together. I haven't seen it and I'm not saying we have to get it next week, just at the next meeting, that's real kind of a short agenda. I'd like to see it and then put, you know, piece together so we can kind of see a little deal of how, how it was all built because that was the reason we did it.
I'm not sure I recall a contract. I'll have to double check, I don't recall a contract. We can get all of the footage from Tech Dot, so when we were having monthly meetings with Tech Dot, we, our in-house GIS did fly some, but not consistently. Um, so we could do a compilation of everything that we've got to, to kind of show that, um, the best that we can, yes.
And again, no hurry and, you know, if it's a long agenda like this, we don't need to do it, but when it's a real short agenda, it'd be kind of neat to see, so.
Okay. Uh, eight point two, monthly financial report for July 2024.
Mayor and council, I have Mike come up. This was added, uh, from our previous agenda item, so Mike's attached everything and if you have any questions, he's here to answer those.
So, uh, council, a- as y'all requested, we've now put the, uh, monthly financial report back on. Um, am I, can I drive this or is this?
No, I'm sorry, it's over here.
Um, as you can see, our, our revenues this year are not, um, as stellar as we'd like. Um, you know, our general, our property tax, we're at a 95% collection rate. Typically, we're at 98, 99% of a collection rate, uh, so we are having a revenue shortfall there. Uh, sales tax is down roughly eight, eight percent. Um, yeah, roughly eight percent, um, from the budget. Um, I'm hopeful within the last two months here, hope things will pick up. Um, but, um, if you scroll, yeah, there we go. Um, you can see we, I'm hopeful that in the next two months, that our sales tax and, you know, maybe some property tax will come, come in in the last few months and kind of make it not, uh, look so grim. Uh, as you can see, we do have a healthy, um, fund balance, our beginning balance is 9.5 and, uh, we're current, currently projecting to come in at, uh, 9.2 million. If there's any specific questions, here's the, our revenue, um, breakout, it shows our, um, our month, our year-to-date, um, to, to July compared to our budget and then July compared to last year's, uh, at, at this time, kind of gives you a snapshot of where we're at. As you can see, you can go down the line, um, not going to read all those percentages, there's a lot of numbers, but you can see, I mean, that, that makes up the, that kind of the deficit in our revenues that y'all were seeing. But I'll be happy to answer any specific questions on general fund if y'all have them.
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks for doing this. This is exactly, I just, is it just a quick snapshot of what, what's going on and now we know? Thanks.
Would you, um, you want me to stop there or do y'all want me to go through enterprise fund and hotel?
One.
I mean, I know it's late and y'all.
This is posted on, on our website, correct?
It is on our website.
Every month. But I do think it's nice to have it attached to the agenda whether you discuss it or not.
Sure. And, and like I said, I'll answer any questions if y'all have them.
The one question I have, Mike, is what, what is, what is the county telling us about the assessment? When are we going to get that?
Well, you, so, uh, let me clarify, um, what, they did come back and, and give me the certified, the certified estimate.
But it had a huge, had a huge mistake in it.
Right, it did have a, it had a mistake and then they came back and they basically took out that, the, what's it, 70, 70, 700 million dollar?
Right.
Error. So whatever that was, they pulled that out. And so again, the night when I was going to present the certified estimate, no new revenue tax rate calculation.
Right.
Um, it, again, our, I ran it pulling that number out, assuming that that was the only error and that is a big assumption, but I, I did run it and that night I, I said basically if we went off that data, our no new revenue rate would roughly be 45 cents, roughly the same as what our current tax rate is. So now we're just waiting on the actual certified rolls, fingers crossed, prayers that there's no errors in it. And we typically get that, I was hoping to get it on the 20th, 19th, uh, yesterday. Um, we typically get it at the end of August, so it looks like it's going to be my birthday present, so.
Yeah.
I'll get it next week.
But it, but it, uh, it sounds like it looked better than we thought it was.
I'm sorry?
It sounds, sounds like it looked better than we thought it was after they took the 700 million out of there.
Well, I mean, it shows that our, our revenue, our, our property values, the existing property values did not increase that much. Um, is, is what, is what that, when your no new revenue rate.
Correct.
Doesn't go up or down, that means your, your existing properties didn't go up or down significantly. Now, again, that's the certified estimate rule. It could change by next week when we get the certified rule.
Okay. All right, that was my question. I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, eight point three, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next, uh, meeting is a special meeting at 5:00 PM next Wednesday, August 28th, and the next regular city council meeting will take place on September 3rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Uh, it's 8:27.